Fumi is the Managing Director of the Lagos Chamber of Commerce International Arbitration Centre. And Fumi will be sharing with us about LaSiak Arbitration. If you have arbitration agreement or you have a dispute, you know how to follow through using LaSiak as the administering institution. Fumi, thank you very much for your time. I know you are a busy woman, but thank you for being with us today to share insight on LaSiak Arbitration. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you, Abayomi, for having me here. Am I able to just pull up my slides? Do I share my screen? Is it?
Yes, please. So I just stopped sharing, so you can share yours.
Okay, so hello, everybody. I'm sure you've had a really perfect training in the last two days. And thank you for staying on and waiting for this session where I'll be speaking on LaSiak. LaSiak, my name is Fumi Yaya, as Abayomi has introduced. I head the Lagos Chamber of Commerce International Arbitration Centre, which I'll be speaking to you about what we do. You've learnt so much about arbitration and ADR and the processes. And I just want to tie it into at least one institution that provides these services and how, you know, as a business, you can take advantage of our services. So just allow me in the next about 20 minutes or so, I'll go through my presentation and hopefully we'll be out of here. Of course, you're encouraged to ask questions as we go along, and I will take as many as I can within the time allotted to me. So LaSiak is, as I have said, the Lagos Chamber of Commerce International Arbitration Centre. We're set up by the Lagos Chamber of Commerce and Industry, which we're all aware is one of Africa's oldest Chamber of Commerce, about 100 years old. Though we're set up by the Chamber, we operate very independently. So we don't necessarily, we're not, we are definitely not, in terms of our core functions, guided or supervised by the Chamber. But then at the back end, in terms of our board functions, we make reports to the Chamber, but we're an independent institution. We generate our own funds and we'll, Chamber members are able to access our services the same way any other local or international business can accept our service. Now, we're set up to provide effective, efficient dispute management solutions to commercial entities across the spectrum of small to medium and high-value claims. We are very focused on our role as a support service to commercial entities and to commercial transactions. And Abayomi has spoken to you and as well as Laura, and I believe she learned you about the different ADR mechanisms as well as arbitration. And, you know, and these are all the services I'll speak about, they will provide the services. And then we also have organic processes that are peculiar just to LaSiak, which we have come up with in a bid to meet the needs of business owners and to provide business dispute resolution solutions. So we have a wide range of these dispute management solutions, and we call them dispute management because, you know, there are many times that the issue is not so much of resolving the dispute, but it's managing, you know, a potential disputes to ensure that the parties are able to go over that hog and then continue their business relationship. And LaSiak is able to, we, we ensure that, you know, parties are able to find a resolution or process that is suitable to them. And I'll talk about this special features of our services that are not typically what you would find in other arbitral institutions. So our suite of rules, which you would see in the middle, the middle box here, you would see arbitration rules. Abayomi has spoken a lot extensively about arbitration mediation rules. I believe that you've also been taught what mediation is. So unlike arbitration, mediation is more of a structured negotiation where the parties themselves decide on what settlements, you know, they find suitable for them. And then there's adjudication, there's expert determination. Now, these are core processes that you would find, you know, in any other arbitral institution. These are core ADR processes. But outside of that, you see that the other boxes to the left and right, these are our own organic dispute resolution processes that, you know, we have come up with to serve businesses. We have our online dispute resolution portal guidelines. Someone just spoke about what ODR is. I'll speak about that and how we use this to support businesses, particularly small businesses. We have our integrated dispute resolution scheme for MSMEs. We have our guidelines for the COVID-19 ADR initiative. We'll speak about all these. So while we provide the core dispute resolution processes that you've been taught, including arbitration, we also have, like I've said, organic processes that are very peculiar to LaSiak, which we call our special features, which supports small businesses. And those are the processes I'll be highlighting in my presentation. So why would you even opt for LaSiak? That's why LaSiak, I'm sure you've been taught that, you know, when you then decide, I want to go the way of arbitration, then the other decision you then have to make is, is it going to be an ad hoc arbitration or an institutional arbitration? So if ad hoc, it means that it's not administered by any institution. And, you know, one can liken that to long-distance learning. And then if it's institutional, that's more like enrolling in the university, for instance. And you can easily tell what the difference between those two are. So if you choose institution, then the question is, what are the available options? And while you know what the available options are, we've been spoken about them internationally. We have the ICC, the LCIA, that's London Court of International Arbitration, and then the International Chamber of Commerce Court of International Arbitration. And we have other institutions, you know, on the continent. But why would you opt for LaSiak? And I hope that I'll be able to convince you as to why LaSiak is an advantageous institution to use for your dispute resolution processes. One is LaSiak, the administration of arbitration and ADR mechanisms is carried out by the secretariat with the supervision and guide of the LaSiak Courts. So unlike institutions that do not have a supervisory body like the LaSiak, like a court, where the tribunal and the secretariat basically, you know, carry out all the, carry out the dispute resolution process. In LaSiak, we have a court, and this court is made up of international arbitrators, mediators, and other experts who have many years of experience in dispute resolution and their experienced neutrals. And they supervise the process. Imagine you have your arbitral tribunal and it could be something as simple as even making a decision as suffices. And one of the parties then say, oh, you know, the cost that the tribunal has arrived at is a bit too high for us. You can apply to the LaSiak Court to review that decision, and then the court will make a review. And the tribunal will, you know, have to comply with the decision of the court. So we have this court and it's, the supervisory role of the court ensures the quality control of our processes. I've already spoken about the fact that the court has a part to review. So while for a lot of us who say, oh, yes, ADR is fast, but then there's also the cost. You know, if you're, if you're dealing in a LaSiak institution, the cost is something that can be managed because, you know, like I said, the parties have access to the courts to review fees. Now, the other special feature of our rules is that our rules can be administered in any jurisdiction. So while we are called LaSiak, the Lagos Chamber of Commerce International Arbitration Centre, we, we do not only function in Lagos, Nigeria. Our rules can be applied anywhere in the world. We administer arbitration, ADR processes anywhere in the world. And even when you choose LaSiak as an applicable, the seat of arbitration is not restricted to just Nigeria. So that's very important, especially when you're involved in an international transaction. Right now, with the Africa Free Trade Continental Agreement, you'll be doing a lot of businesses with, with companies from other countries on the continent. And then sometimes, you know, if, for instance, you choose that, oh, yes, I want LaSiak closing my contract, and the other party saying, oh, but, you know, the cost of coming to Lagos or something will be too high, or why, why, why should we choose a Nigerian seat? The LaSiak rules do not restrict you to a Nigerian seat. I hope we all understand what the seat of arbitration is. The LaSiak rules do not restrict, do not restrict parties to use Nigeria as a seat. And certainly, the rules can be applied in other jurisdictions. The LaSiak, sorry. Now, we've talked about, I heard Abayomi, when I, when I joined this session, talk about a panel of neutrals that institutions have. We have a very, very robust, highly qualified and certified panel of neutrals who are experts from various regions of the world. So Abayomi, I remember him speaking to you and saying that any of you here can actually be an arbitrator or mediator, depending on what your expertise is and your skill, and if you've done, you know, training in dispute resolution. And so when you come, when, when the LaSiak Courts, which would happen in instances where the parties are not able to decide on who their neutral is or who they are arbitrator, who they are mediator is, when I use the word neutral, I'm just referring to that spectrum of whether it's an arbitrator, a mediator, an adjudicator, an expert determiner. Now, where the parties can make that decision, on that LaSiak rules, the LaSiak Court will, will appoint an arbitrator or mediator for the parties. And it is, it is, the mediators is typically appointed from a panel of neutrals. And it's very comforting, I'm sure, to know, for you to know that, you know, these experts are, first off, they're not typically just Nigerians. We have experts from all over the world. We have experts from different walks of life. So I know Abayomi has spoken to you about the fact that arbitrators do not necessarily have to be lawyers. And in fact, many, these days, you find a lot of non-lawyers in this space. And in our panel of, on our panel of experts, you'd find a lot of qualified experts that are not necessarily there. So if it's an arbitration, for instance, that has to do with an international trade dispute or construction dispute, we would be appointing, the court will be appointing experts in that field. It's construction, for instance, it would be possibly quantity surveyor or an engineer as opposed to just a lawyer. And we also are very focused on supporting local and international businesses by offering a cost-effective and reliable forum for dispute resolution. These are all the reasons why, in our opinion, one should strongly consider LaSiak when you're opting or considering dispute resolution institutions to choose for your business disputes. Now, what are the special features of our rules that support small businesses such as yourself? This is really why I'm here today to speak to you about the special features. And as I've said earlier on, so this is in addition to arbitration, which we, which we provide, in addition to mediation, which we provide. I'm sure you've been taught this too. These are all the services that we provided, homegrown, organic to us that, you know, we have developed to be able to provide business support for small businesses. So one is what we call our K-Dry Scheme. K-Dry is an acronym for COVID-19 Alternative Dispute Resolution Initiative. The other is our Integrated Dispute Resolution Scheme, and then the last is our Online Dispute Resolution Process. So K-Dry. For everyone here, I'm sure has a story to tell about how the COVID-19 pandemic has impacted on their business. And thank God, you know, businesses are recovering now. Last year, you know, things were clearly certainly worse. And it was as a result of that that we came to, we put our heads down as an institution, particularly the chairman of my board, actually, and one of our directors, and came up with this scheme to provide cheaper, speedier and effective dispute resolution for businesses, African businesses that have been impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. Because we know that, you know, you, especially at the time, and I'm sure that that's still the case today, we, parties will be involved in disputes, but again, just because of how the pandemic has affected their business, they don't have the funds to commence an action in court, or even an arbitration, or even a mediation, because, you know, there are costs that are associated with these processes. And we, you know, we as dispute resolution support, you know, and business support service provider, we feel that, you know, there must always be an avenue or platform for businesses to be able to access justice, right? And that's how we came up with this K-Dry Scheme. Now, how does K-Dry work? So I've said here that it's very ad hoc in the sense that where two parties agree. So they're two businesses, and then they say that, look, we're in court, we've been sitting on, that's one instance. The court sounds dry, or the files have been burnt, you know, due to the resentable unrest in the country. Or it could be anything. Or we've even opted for arbitration, and now we're looking at the cost of arbitration, and we're like, there's no way we can afford it. Both parties can agree, and because that's the thing about ADR and arbitration, both parties always have to agree. But what parties can then agree that, you know what, if it's even a matter that is in court, let's agree to have this matter stayed in court and then refer it to resolution under the K-Dry Scheme at LaSiak. Is it a matter that we had already provided in our contracts should be resolved by arbitration by another institution? And then you realize that, oh, but this K-Dry Scheme that LaSiak administers would help us access justice at a much cheaper rate. So therefore, let us agree to not go with what our contract was never provided and then sign what Abayomi has explained to you as a submission agreement. And then say, we would now submit this dispute resolution under this K-Dry Scheme as administered by LaSiak. You know, in any of the circumstances, one can, you know, access the K-Dry Scheme. But what happens when you come on that, the K-Dry Scheme, after the parties have agreed that that is the process that they want to use? The LaSiak secretariat then has sessions with the parties, one, to determine, in view of the fact that there is a financial constraint, what dispute resolution process do you, as a parties, think would be the most effective, you know, considering costs? That would be one discussion that the secretariat would have with the parties. Should we go by way of arbitration? Will it be more expensive? Will it take a longer time? Should we use, should we attempt mediation? Will it, you know, be effective? After they have agreed on the process to use, then you then consider things like, should it be a physical hearing? What are the costs associated with the physical hearing? Or should it be a document-only hearing? Should we try and expedite this process? These are discussions that the secretariat will engage both parties with. And then the most important one is, the secretariat will be asking the parties, what is your budget for this process? If we've decided that we're agreeing by an arbitration, both parties, what do you, what are both of you willing to pay for this process? Now, once we arrive at what we, what, you know, is a reasonable budget, of course, it has to be reasonable. What LaSiak then does is, because at the back end, LaSiak already has a pool of arbitrators, mediators, who have already pledged their support to this scheme. So these are experienced arbitrators, people like Abayomi, who have pledged their support to him. I said, when you call on us to provide our service under the K-Dry Scheme, as long as we are available and there's no conflict, do it at whatever discounted rates that you have agreed with the parties. And this is, you know, the neutral's own way of just supporting businesses and ensuring that the economic activities continue. So we then approach these neutrals, we identify one that is most suitable for the dispute in view of the subject matter. And as long as that mediator is available, because it's already pledged its time, it'll take on that, that reference. And then the parties are able to go on with the arbitration and the mediation. So they have, you know, the services of an expert arbitrator, but, and then also the LaSiak's administrative services, but everything at a significantly discounted rate that is, you know, suitable for them based on the budget that they have already expressed. So that's how the K-Dry works. The next scheme that we have that supports small businesses is what we call IDRIS. And that's an acronym for our Integrated Dispute Resolution Scheme. So IDRIS works slightly different from K-Dry, even though they're still connected. The way IDRIS works is, it starts off with us as an institution providing free mediation services to small businesses. And in fact, I must say that that's actually something that we're currently doing. So there is our, the IDRIS scheme for the first quarter of the year is on right now, where we offer free mediation to businesses in any form, I mean, to small businesses, MSMEs, in any sector. So the mediators will provide their services free, and LaSiak as an administering body will provide our services free as well, while the parties are only expected to pay a registration fee of, I believe, 12,000, 12,000 naira. Now, the underlining agreement when your party opts, or when parties opt to, to take advantage of the IDRIS scheme is that where the parties are unable to settle their disputes through mediation, then either of the disputing parties has that option of asking that that dispute be referred to arbitration to be conducted by the LaSiak secretariat under our rules at, you know, on a fee-paying basis. So you have mediation free. I know you, you know, the talks have spoken to you a lot about multi-tier dispute resolution process where you have med ad, for instance. So this is your typical med ad. You start with mediation, and then you end up in an arbitration, in some cases. You settle the mediation, and the mediation is totally free, pay nothing. If you're able to resolve it at the mediation set within the time period that is stipulated in the agreement, that's great. If you're not able to resolve the dispute within that time period, either of the parties has the option to say, okay, let this matter now be referred to arbitration. And then it has to be an arbitration administered by LaSiak, and it's, you know, and it would be fee-paying. But then, what fees would you pay? You will still not be paying LaSiak standard fees, which I would show or talk about, you know, in the short while. You would still be paying fees as determined under the K-Dry guidelines. And I've just spoken to you about the K-Dry guidelines, meaning even when the dispute is transitioned into a fee-paying arbitration, the secretariat, the secretariat will still engage the parties to say, all right, what's your budget for this? And that's simply because we're aware that, you know, cost of dispute resolution for small businesses can be, you know, a significant problem. And we want to ensure that businesses continue to access justice, that there must be an access to justice, whether it's in the court or it is through alternative dispute resolution. Now, the final scheme is our online dispute resolution process, our ODR portal. And I know Abayomi was explaining what ODR is, and which is essentially, you know, dispute resolution done virtually. And, and as he said to you, the history behind this, and this is actually why we set it up at the time, but, you know, now it applies to any form of businesses, was to provide the service to, you know, online businesses, your eBay, Jumia, Conga, GG, you know, type of businesses. And those are the people that we have actually approached where you transact online. Obviously, if you're transacting online and then you have a dispute, and somebody now writes a letter to your, to your business and says, oh, you know, based on this transaction, we're instituting an arbitration, it's definitely more convenient if there is a process on your portal. Or it could be on your portal, which we, which is a relationship that we have with some businesses. Or it could just be, you know, a link where you can say, okay, let's just click on this LaSiak portal and go through our dispute resolution process there. So essentially, what happens is, you have your, you can have your mediation online, you can have your arbitration online. But because it's online, it's a more abridged version of, you know, the arbitration or mediation processes that have been explained to you and significantly cheaper as well. So it's, this ODR would also be very useful to businesses that trade online. And the cost of conducting an arbitration or mediation on the portal is just 80,000 naira per day. And it's a very simple, fast, cost-effective process. Typically, you know, the process doesn't take more than two weeks to have resolved on the portal. I'm just saying, is it okay? Okay, someone says here in the dispute between A and B on the payment for services rendered by A. If at the point of execution of the resolution advised by the mediator party, B decides to frustrate the process, what do you suggest party A does? Okay, so this isn't necessarily with regards to LaSiak, but I would say, if you're going through, so in the dispute between A and B on the payment of services rendered by A.
Okay, so it appears will lose for me. So before Fumi rejoins or comes back, let me just make some quick announcements. The first announcement is about the certificates. This is a training program that comes with a certificate jointly issued by the African Arbitration Academy and other collaborative institutions. So what you need to do is to send us your full names, the way you want your name to appear on the certificate, just send to us. So if you have not sent yours, I'll kindly send your full names to info@prainsburylaw.com. And, you know, we'll issue your certificate and send it to you. Another question that I thought, I thought to mention is that I've been seeing several emails on sharing of slides and videos. For the slides, after the training, we'll share slides, we'll send the slides to you. There is a dedicated ODR platform that is being designed at the moment. That ODR platform, sorry, I said ODR, ADR platform. That ADR platform essentially has all materials on ADR that SMEs can find very useful in terms of resources. It also has a dedicated B-to-B platform, you know, for SMEs, specifically designed for SMEs. And what we conceive for this is that we want SMEs in Nigeria to be able to relate with SMEs in Ghana. We want SMEs in Ghana to be able to relate with SMEs in Mozambique. The training we are doing now is for Nigeria, Ghana, Mozambique, and we are going to other African countries. So we want those SMEs to be able to relate on business-to-business relationships, share ideas, you know, contract, do different things through the platform. So it has a chat platform, like a chat room, where you can develop your B-to-B relationship. That, once that is done, please don't send your, don't send your names here. Send your names to info@prainsburylaw.com so that we are able to miss those names, or we can, you know, prepare a certificate. Then back to the platform. So the platform is very important. Once it's up for formal launch, we'll send all of you an email so that we can introduce you to the platform. You'll see your benefit on it, where you can, you're able to network with the, with other companies, other SMEs in other countries in terms of your, doing your business or anything. You know, will also be a platform for subsequent or future ADR trainings. So this platform, of course, has no cost to anybody. You can just register freely on it and, you know, enjoy the benefits in terms of the resources and everything. Once it's, once it's ready, we'll send you an email and we'll do a formal launch where we explain to you over Zoom, you know, the benefit of the platform, the, or the, or the details in terms of the elements and the features. Apart from that, because we're still waiting for Fumi, and she has not come back, I will see if there's any question that I can quickly answer. I promised people yesterday that we will leave here, you know, early today. So shortly, we'll soon, we'll soon round off for today. Someone has said, does LaSiak have rate for MSMEs, which MSMs can choose from? Yes, as a matter of fact, when we were designing this training, one, one thing that came to mind, why I actually, you know, invited LaSiak to come and speak and to also collaborate with us on this is because LaSiak has affiliation with the Lagos Chamber of Commerce. And the way LaSiak was, you know, established, it's essentially for MSMs, you know, I mean, affordable arbitration. So I'm able to speak to this because I'm part of the Court of Arbitration of LaSiak, and I understand how they work. So they have different packages for MSMs, for small-scale arbitration, when you have those small claims. So it's perfectly structured for MSMs, and they are very cost-effective. So, but if you have big claims, if you have other claims, you can as well choose other institutions. But LaSiak is one that is custom-made and designed for MSMs and SMEs in Nigeria. Someone said, can videos of decisions be shared too? Yes, we'll share the slides for the videos, you know, we have to do some work on the videos. And, you know, once those videos are finalized, we also, we also share the videos with you so that you can, you're able to watch the sessions again. Someone was saying, after this training, can we apply to the arbitrators with LaSiak, or do you have to undergo special training? No, you don't. No, you don't have to undergo special training. You can apply, just, you know, write to LACAC, Fumi is the MG. If you go on their website, on LACAC's website, they have directions on how you can apply to become an arbitrator under LACAC. Once you have the requisite qualifications, you know, to sit as an arbitrator or to be on their panel, then they will meet you. So please go on there, on their website, or when Fumi comes back, I can tell her to answer that again. Are we expecting slides with the certificate? I've answered that, yes, we are. So I think in the absence of any other question, I would like to thank everyone. I'm trying to filter now to see if there's any question that I've missed. Tell me, is there any question that I've missed? Someone is saying, I'm a chartered accountant and a satisfied mediation advisor. I don't know what that is, maybe the person is trying to introduce herself. But of course, like I said, this training is useful for accountants. And seeing that you're also a satisfied mediation advisor makes sense. And that goes to further exemplify the fact that not only lawyers can do ADR, or other, even accountants, medical doctors, surveyors, construction consultants, you know, experts, they also do ADR, either in form of mediation, negotiation or arbitration. Kindly post email address of where we send names for certificate. Okay, I will do that now so that we can all have it. It's info@prinsburylaw.com or copy timitopay dot samuel at prinsburylaw dot com. So I'll just send that to us. So you can look at the Q and A box or the chat box to see where you send your email addresses to. So you send your full names to. So, thank you very much, everyone. Well, our Fumi has not been able to reconnect and I don't want to delay us further. So what I will do is we share Fumi's slides with all of you. If you have any other question, if you send to us at info@prinsburylaw, we'll forward to Fumi and Fumi will answer all your questions. We'll, we'll also be available to ask, ask, answer any question that you may have. And if you have any concern about ADR, in appointing an arbitrator, in drafting your contract, drafting your arbitration agreement, you want to appoint arbitrators, you need counsel for your ADR or drafting your contract, you can always reach out to us. If you have any problem whatsoever, we do free ADR consultation for people. Because, you know, training on ADR and this kind of things are things that we pride ourselves to be doing for, for people, even at no cost. So if you come to us, we'll, we'll guide you. About where it is getting into, going to court or going to appear in arbitration and it's proper, the proper, going to a proper case, then that may attract some fees. But other than that, any major concerns or if you have questions and you want us to clarify, we are always happy to make clarifications or give you necessary resources or materials that will help you in, in understanding that. Yes, I mean, your full names should be sent to info@prinsburylaw so that that can be used for your, for your certificate. Thank you very much for staying with us for these two days. Thank you very much for, for being our partners in this journey of, you know, of, you know, into the world of ADR. Thank you very much for joining yesterday and joining today. We'll promise you that you get all the slides either today or tomorrow. And that we'll also upload all the slides on the ADR platform. You have access to download from that platform anytime, at any time, even after now. I'll also send, you know, to you, your certificates. For all the people that will have their names, who go ahead to print or to design, the certificates are going to be sent to you by email. You go ahead to, to design all your certificates from today, once you have your names. Other than that, thank you very much. We are always available to you at those email addresses that I sent to you. So answer any question that you may have, you know, if you have any question or concern. One more question in the Q and A box that I see. Okay, I think I've answered the question. So thank you very much and enjoy the rest of your day. And please stay in touch. If you have any question, you know, let us know, we'll be happy to answer. On that note, I'll, I'll say bye-bye to everyone. Thank you.